The following program is closed captioned for the thinking impaired.
By tomorrow, I will rule the world!
You think he's gone? He's not gone! At the whole point, he's never gone!
Is this some radical new therapy?
You see!
Hi Tom, we're live.
I know, we're trying to get it shared. You think I'd have the sponsors ready? I don't.
Oh god.
I was actually up at 10 o'clock this morning and it took me until 12:30 to be able to get out of bed this morning.
10:30? That's actually early.
Two hours to get out of bed. I know, I had things... I was supposed to meet the mayor's endorsements this afternoon. So I set my alarm and I couldn't go back to sleep, but I couldn't get out of bed, so... And it took me half an hour to get here and this is literally like 500 feet from my office.
You almost fell coming in too.
I had an old guy in a wheelchair come over and like asked me if I needed help getting across the street. That's how I knew I was in trouble.
Did someone cross you? Like someone crossed you?
Yeah.
Okay. Alright, let me make sure we're live. Welcome in everyone. If you guys are watching, please like, share.
Alright, so let's try and save as much time as we can. Let's get this show on the road. Hi, how you guys doing? My name's Tom Douglas here with the Paying Attention Podcast. Higher top the Golden Seal Apothecary, who still has not called me to thank me for talking about them on every show. Here at the NCAM Studios in downtown North Andover, right across the street from the plush and luxurious Valley Patriot offices here on Main Street in North Andover. We want to thank our sponsors. Century 21 McLennan Real Estate. We do have Matt McLennan's coming on the show right after the election's over to talk real estate. A lot of bizarre things going on in the real estate market. I cannot stop staring at you.
Why?
Because of what you're wearing. What are you doing to me?
Oh, I'm sorry.
Jesus Christ, you're killing me.
Stop, you're gonna give your listeners some content today.
The Zanny Pesci Law Office. I was hanging out with the sexiest woman alive last night. Gina Zanny Pesci. You know what's funny? How many people come over to me and tell me how offended they are that I call her the sexiest woman alive? And then she's standing there going, "Yeah, but I like it." And they continue to argue like she's not supposed to like it because they don't like it.
It's because you don't call them that.
Right, exactly. Yes, that's 100% true, 100%. Marsan and Sign Construction. We gotta get Ronnie in here. EIS Investigation and Gun Training. Tomo and Shaken Seafood. We'll do for Tomo. We'll do for Tomo.
Can we please?
We can't do it this week because I'm on deadline, but let's do it like Tuesday or Wednesday night next week.
Okay, sounds good.
JG's Ice Cream. A free shout out to the Jofita Brothers who love the community and do so much for us. Clear Path for Veterans New England, which should be working. Michael Plant's gonna be with us in a second. He should be working with them. They do amazing work. It is owned as a nonprofit for homeless veterans run by veterans. You know, you've got this IVCS fake nonprofit that was out there pretending to help homeless people, not run by veterans that were kind of siphoning money off on the side? And then you've got Clear Path for Veterans New England that's run by veterans, so you know every penny that you donate goes directly to a homeless veteran. In fact, they don't even take money from donations for their overhead. They actually have grants from the VA to pay for their overhead. So if you donate $100 to Clear Path, $100 goes directly to a homeless veteran. So it's not like one of these things where you donate to the Red Cross and $5 of every 100 goes where it's supposed to go. 100% of Clear Path money goes to...
Who's the president there?
I don't know who the president is, but my contact is Jason Gilbert. He's a really tremendous... He's a John Ratke Hero Veteran Award winner. As by the way, our next guest, Michael Plant, is an honorary veteran. He's the only non-veteran to receive a John Ratke Hero Veteran Award at our Valley Patriot Bash.
What about the one that just got one this year for the Veteran Award? Is she a veteran?
Ah shit, you're right. I think we have, that's our second one. In fact, we were supposed to call markup, so we'll talk to him about that in a second. Who do we have left? AFC Urgent Care. Hello to Zaka and everybody over at AFC. Pleasant Valley Landscaping Contractors. Prime Insurance, the Doug Mcherio Law Office. I've been following all his videos lately. He's hilarious.
He is funny.
If you need insurance, you've really got to go to Prime Insurance. In the year that he's been with us, he's not gotten one phone call from sponsoring this show. And you guys are making me look bad. So somebody out there has to be looking for insurance. Please call Prime Insurance. They're in North Andover and North Reading. Tell them that you heard about it on this show.
They might be afraid to say they're affiliated to you.
There's a lot of people that do, by the way. They go to our sponsors, but they're afraid to say that they like us. W30N Web Design. They're out, they're out. Four Star Lighting Stadium. And our new advertiser today. Candidate from Methuen City Council, Juan de Santos. Juan de Santos.
Juan de Santos. Sí, sí señor. Gracias, por favor.
Alright, let's get to why we're here today. We'll get to some of the other fun stuff later on, but... A guy that I've known since he was Tower Hill Mark. We called him Tower Hill Mark back then. And I like South Lawrence Mark much better than I liked Tower Hill Mark. So Michael Plant, he's the Lawrence City Councilor. I think he's the longest... He's gonna correct me in a second if I'm wrong. But I think he's the longest-serving Lawrence City Councilor, at least that I know of, at least in my lifetime. He served at least 10 or 15 years, I think, on Tower Hill. And I know he served at least 10 years in Lawrence, in South Lawrence. He's also a guy who's not a veteran, but spends all of his free time honoring veterans. And one of his pet projects, he just wrote a book about it, or he's in process of writing a book about it, is to honor World War I veterans, because we had all these things all over the city of Lawrence for World War II veterans. And Mark was like, "Well, what about the World War I guys?" Like they've got a cemetery up there with falling apart, you know, headstones, but we should be doing stuff for them. So he started going out and naming squares and pushing through the city council to honor our World War I veterans. And I think he either just wrote a book or he's about to. We'll let him give you the details. Mark LaPlant, Lawrence City Councilor, Mark LaPlant.
But District F.
Who by the way, was my first ever, right? Am I right about this? First ever? Mark?
You asking me, um, first ever what? You gotta finish the sentence.
I figured you were gonna finish it for me. My first ever guest on radio when I started my show on WCCM in 1999. My first guest was Mark LaPlant. My second guest was Jose El Santiago. And my third guest, Joe Quateroni. Mark's the only guy still around.
Wow, I didn't know it was your first guest.
First guest. I found, I still have all those tapes, by the way.
You know, you should send that to me. I'd be curious to hear how that show went. That'd be wild.
It's horrible. You were great, but it was my first time ever doing radio and like we had gaps of like five minutes because I pushed the wrong button. Couple times we were in mid-conversation and I dumped into commercial by accident. I didn't, I had no idea what I was doing. It was my first time ever on radio. Like I was on radio as a guest before that, but it was my first time hosting a show. And it was just, I was horrible. I remember walking out of there going, "I'm never doing this again." And here we are 30 something years later.
Mark, you are from District F, correct?
Correct.
And you are the only one that knows the whole city charter by memory, correct?
Let's not go crazy.
Okay, okay.
No, I'm gonna, I'm gonna...
It's something that the Spanish community says often, so...
I'm gonna key you in on a secret. You don't need to memorize it. You need to have it. That way you can reference it quickly. So you don't need to be a master of all this stuff. Is it helpful to remember and all that stuff? Yes, 100% is, but if there was a new city councilor coming in or a fresh one, I would just say, just be aware of the charter, be aware of our rules. And have it with you when we're having the city council discussions and debate and refer to it. And that's all you gotta do. You don't need to memorize it.
So Mark LaPlant, Councilor LaPlant, former Mr. President, who by the way, I think you should be president of the council again. I don't know that you'll have the votes, but you really should be. I like Giovanni, but I think he just did a better job. You're on the show today because not only have you been going around and naming things for World War I veterans to honor them, you also did something that like a lot of people talk about but never do. And that's that when things are named for a veteran, people kind of look at the name and they go, "Yeah, but what did he do?" Like, where can we find out information about this guy? And so you took it upon yourself, because you're a pretty bright guy, to, when you start naming things for veterans, you started to put like little signs up that explain who the veteran was so people don't have to like go home and look it up or go on Google and hopefully find something about that one person. Tell people what you're doing. Tell me, and you just started, I guess like last week, starting to do that, right?
Yes, we just finished two of them. And I'm gonna tell you one more thing. It goes beyond just the veterans. Yes, the predominant number of squares and things named in our city are for veterans, no doubt about it. And there's many reasons for that. However, this project, I'm calling it the Lawrence Square Project or the Square Project. I was able to get a, let's see if I could get a grant from the Lawrence Cultural Council, and they've been tremendous partners, to go ahead and to actually create and draft signs that have information. Because here's the deal. I'm sure you're the same way that I am. You go into a different community. You see somebody's name on a square, on a corner, on a park, or a building. You're like, "Who is this person?" I mean, why did this person get it? And the same thing is true in our city. We have a lot. I mean, we've been a city since 1853, a town since 1847. And ever since about the early part of the last century, we started to name things after important people in our city. And so, but those stories are lost. And so no matter, no matter where you go around the Commonwealth, around the country, around the world, you see names, don't know what they mean. And so when I've come back, I said, "Listen, we need to tell their stories. We're forgetting these people's stories." Somebody or somebody's councils, mayors, government agencies, whoever these people are, decision makers, have decided that they're going to name something. And we think we're gonna remember the stories forever. And we don't. Generations come and go, and people move in and out. We don't remember this. So what this project is designed to do is to tell these people's stories. That's the first thing, right? What's fascinating about this one is not only do we forget the stories, I have found that we don't even have the signs up anymore. We don't even know there's supposed to be a corner for somebody.
Right, right.
And, you know, 14 years ago, a city plow hit a sign that was never put back up again. People come and go and we've forgotten that there's even, that there should be a corner there named after somebody. So we're creating, we're fixing that wrong. And because of the Lawrence Cultural Council, this is not costing the city any money because the grant is funding the actual signs. And so we've done two already, Tom. And we did Robert Charles Beard. And we did, why am I drawing a blank? That just happened the other day. David PJ Bedrosian from Vietnam. And I'll give you the schedule here in a second, but... What happens, we're telling the story of these individuals. We're gonna be telling about 50 of them.
That's amazing. That's just amazing.
And we're doing to the schedule in a second, but the beauty behind this is several things. One is, like you, we're, I mean, this is important. If people who are watching your podcast, it's probably even more gravitating than it was just listening to it, right? So you're watching it, you absorb more of it. Pictures matter, images matter. So we are going, we have on these new upgraded signs, if we can, we don't have everybody's picture, but 95, 97% will have the individual's picture.
That's great.
Which is amazing, right? So you have a, you can see and connect. It's all about connecting. If they're a veteran, you have their branch of service. You've got their date of birth, date of death, where they live. I think that's important. I mean, if we're trying to connect with people today from people that lived 60 years ago, you're gonna tell them where they live. People could be living in the same spot that this person lived in and say, there's another connection point. Then a brief bio, and then finally, two QR codes. One's in Spanish that I narrate, one isn't, I mean, English, excuse me. One's in English that I narrate and one's in Spanish that Yder Batas Muldoon translates. QR codes that go right to the narration. So you're able to tap that and then hear even more information. You'll have some brief bio on it, you'll have so many characters, but then even more information on the bio. And then with partners with the Lawrence Public Library, remember Louise Sandberg?
I do, yeah, yeah.
So Louise Sandberg used to have this thing called the Queen City Blog. And she used to bring local history there. And so now we are setting up blogs through the partnership that I have with the library, putting each one of those narration segments on there. We've got one, both of them are on there already. So I mean, I can go on and on. I want you to have a chance to ask me a question, but...
No, I'm good. I think this is great because what I really just wanted to do is I wanted people at home, you know, we're talking about, it's election time, right? So we're talking election stuff. But you don't have, you don't have an opponent, so I didn't mind having you on to talk about this. Because I want people at home, even if they don't live in Lawrence, they live in Methuen, they live in North Andover, to see what you're doing for Lawrence and not just to recognize that you're doing it because you do deserve a lot of credit for it. But what you're doing is ingenious and other people should be following your lead and copying what you're doing. Because you're right. I live in North, I've lived in North Andover. I moved in in the year 2000. I've been here literally 25 years. I don't know anything about why the common is named for who it's named after. I don't know anything about why the different historical buildings in North Andover are named. And when you walk over to the sign and you see the sign, you expect like in Washington DC where some of those monuments at least explain to you what they are. And locally, that doesn't exist. And so when I heard you were doing this, I'm like, "Oh my God, that's something I always thought about." And I bet a whole bunch of people have always thought about. But nobody actually ever bothered to go out and do the work to go out and do it, and you are.
And I appreciate that. And you know, during the city council meetings, for example, oftentimes when we're debating, discussing stuff, that comes up. They don't, we have these signs up and no one even knows who they are. And that really struck a nerve with me when I heard that a few years now by a couple of counselors. And I said, "You know, we gotta fix that." And so this is what it's all about. So 50 signs, this is gonna take, this is gonna take a while. It's gonna last into next year, into next year. And weather being what it is, it could go into the end of next year. So what you're going to see, you're gonna see these stories. I encourage your listeners, I encourage you watching this podcast, to, one of the ways, we're still developing it, but a good place to get the information on where the schedule is or what the next ones are, is on my Facebook page, Lawrence City Council Mark LaPlant. On my Facebook page, I'm putting the stuff there, including the blog post from the public library, as well as some images from the events that we've had. I got a couple of bits of information I think would be interesting. Remember Charles Body?
Yes, we talk about him often.
So, so the first guy that we did is Robert C. Beard, who was in World War I, happened to be. And he got PTSD. He was exposed to gas, came back, and he died in 1920. And so when he died, they remembered him. They called, they called Robert Beard, I think Charles. That was his great uncle. Charles Body is named after Robert Charles Beard. So Charles Body came to Lawrence two weeks ago for the unveiling of his great uncle's sign. And of course, the emotion of that is pretty intense. I mean, just to go through it. And it just, it makes you feel like the connection. This past week, a couple of days ago, we had, his name is David PJ Bedrosian. And I guess he liked to be called David. He was a Vietnam veteran and he died in Vietnam tragically, tragically died. He was actually hit by a fellow US soldier in the middle of a monsoon that hit him a forklift and died there. And he was two months away from coming back home, finishing his tour of duty. Well, his family came two days ago and you can just see the emotions. There was tears in folks' eyes. And they think about him every day. He's important to them. And so not only are we telling the stories about people, but family members are also part of this as well. And I guess I'll give you the next two. Next week, we're gonna do Paul Bonjorno. Paul Bonjorno died in Sicily during World War II, during the invasion. His parents came from Sicily. They immigrate to this country, start this market on commish, we call Bonji's Market.
I remember, yes, I remember my grandfather talking about it.
Bonjorno, Bonji, yeah. So at Bonji's Market. And so he enters World War II. He is in North Africa. He is part of the invasion force. And while he's in Sicily, just miles away from where his parents grew up and met, gets killed in action. Amazing. And what's even more amazing is I found out the story afterwards that a school, a, a, a... North Andover Selectman, Paul, is it Salifia, Salafi?
Salafi.
I think, Salafi. That's his uncle.
Wow.
He was named after Paul Bonjornio.
That's crazy.
So that's, that's next week. And if your listeners want to come, it's gonna be next October 8th at 4:30 PM. And the last one I've got real quick is that we've got schedules on the 60th at 9:00 AM. A non-veteran, a non-veteran. This is a priest who came from Cuba. And he really cut, I mean, he was well-loved, an Augustinian. And he was a priest at Holy Rosary Church.
And... That's the one that used to be on Lawrence Street?
No, he lived on, no, he was on, it's on the corner of Essex.
Okay.
In Union Street. And that's where the corner is, his father Caraballo. And Father Caraballo died many years ago. And so, but he was well-loved and he broke a lot of the barriers back in the 70s and 80s amazingly. And so, and so that's like, for example, a non-veteran, a non-military person, I mean, obviously a non-military person, but it goes beyond. These corners go beyond just military people.
Right.
I have one question for you, Mr. Plant. Where can people find out? Is there like an archives department where people have access to from the city to, you know, find out about this history and information about people that were here prior to, you know, to the time now?
Well, that's what I'm doing.
Okay.
Because we don't. And here's the sad stuff. The sad thing is that sometimes the information that we have officially on the website is wrong. We have a sign up today for Charles Donovan. It says on the sign for Charles Donovan, this is on Andover Street. He is a World War II veteran. He died in 1938. He's not a World War II veteran. But that's what the sign says. And no fault, you know, these are the things that happen over time.
Oh sure.
We lose the stories.
Look, you can't get the Eagle Tribune to tell us an accurate portrayal of what happened at the city council meeting the night before. So you know that over the last 100 years, people that have been doing historical things have gotten things wrong, right? And what's great about what you're doing is that you are correcting the record. You are doing a deep dive on some of this stuff. We do have to let you go, but I do have two things real quick to ask you. I want to start highlighting all of these things that you're doing for each veteran, even if it's only like a paragraph or two, whatever you're putting up. Can you email me a picture and the little short bio that you're putting up for the veterans you've done already for next Monday's paper? I'm gonna, I'm gonna make sure with all the election stuff, I'm gonna find, I'll find a spot in the paper for it. And I can't remember what the other thing was. Oh, real quick, very, very quick. Not a veteran, but something you and I have talked about a lot over the last 20 years. A pet peeve of mine in the city of Lawrence, and that is firefighter William McGuire. Lost his life on Portland Street in a porch collapse back in the 80s. The mayor is a friend of mine. I love him, so it's no political criticism on him. But he's naming parks for Nunez de Maca. And he's naming parks for Julio Silverio. And we've got a firefighter that literally lost his life. And I'm not saying that those people don't deserve it. It's nothing, it's not a reflection on them, but they weren't veterans. They didn't lose their life for the city. They weren't police officers and firefighters. And I really want to start to see somebody, maybe you, or maybe you have a better idea that somebody else can do it, can honor this firefighter who lost his life in the city, that as far as I know, that nobody's ever shown me, has really nothing named after him.
So I'm listening. So the answer is, I'm always willing, the answer is, I'm clearly interested, number one. Especially someone who was killed in the line of duty, especially in those instances. This is, I know we're running with time, but what we're dealing with here is amazingly delicate and potentially controversial stuff. Who gets named? Who doesn't get named?
Right.
When someone gets named, someone else comes out of the woodwork and says, "Well, what about whoever?" Right? And that's always the challenge. And I'm trying to convince my colleagues at some level, you know, we need to make sure, I don't, I don't think we should be putting restrictions on who gets it, but we should make sure whatever it is that we do, that the bar is relatively high.
Yeah, there should be a standard of some kind, you know, like the McGovern Transportation Center, right? I know why they named it after her. She got the money. But she's a politician. That was her friggin' job, right? Her job was to get us money for those things. So a politician who moved out of Lawrence because she stated, in the Eagle Tribune stated, she moved out of Saunders Street because of the cultural changes that were going on because Latinos were moving in. She has an entire huge transportation center named after her and firefighter McGuire has nothing? It's just, listen, I'd have to drive by that damn thing every day. And every single day of my life for the last 30 years, every time I drive by that, I think that should be called the William McGuire Transportation Center. Every day.
Well, there's always, you can always do like a committee where you can have people, you know, given information and names of, you know, that always works.
Listen, I'm not saying that there are other people that don't deserve it, right? There are obviously other veterans that have nothing named after them. But you know, my dad was killed in the line of duty and the city was awesome. They immediately went up into the cemetery. They named a little street after him. They put up that memorial to him. Now when they're building the new police station, they're gonna have a thing named after him there too, as well as the other three or four officers that have died in the line of duty. But we have a Lawrence firefighter who lost his life. And not 100 years ago, it's 200 years ago, but in the 80s, right? Within our lifetime. And there's still nothing named after him. And I don't, I don't know his family. I'm not advocating for people that I know, he's not related to me. But I remember when it happened. And I remember when it happened and I remember when they started naming other things for politicians after that. And it just always pissed me off. I think we've written about five editorials in 20 years about it. And here we are in 2025. So anyways, I'll leave you with that and maybe you could just think about it and maybe we can work on it on the side. But if there are family members of fallen firefighter McGuire out there, they should have someplace to go to honor him. I think. Anyways, thank you for your time though, Council Michael Plant. Are you at work or are you home today?
I am, I'm at home, taking some time off so I can do this, of course.
Oh, you're the best.
So, but this is, you and I haven't talked like this in quite some time, so we were due. So I'm glad you invited me and I'm glad we had a chance to chat a little bit.
Yeah, let's try and catch up on lunch sometime like in the next week. Are you supporting, are you supporting anybody from there?
100% not supporting anybody from there. Right out of the gate, I sold both candidates. I'm not getting involved, I'm not looking for your endorsement. And I'm not endorsing either one of you.
Right.
You're not good decisions with all that.
Yeah, and that's just, you know, that's just me. It's all, campaigns are about addition. I like both, Tom, very much like you. I like both, there's things I like about both of those candidates. I'm friendly and friends with both of them.
They're both amazing people.
And my, at the time, when I made that, I go, "My concern about it is my own race."
Right.
I'm focusing on me.
Right.
And you do your own race. But we'll see what happens. How many weeks are we away now? Like, is it like five weeks?
Oh no, we're 34 days away.
Oh, we're closer than that, okay.
Yeah, 34 days away, I think, now. So I appreciate your time. At some point, I'd like to have you come into the show, even if we have to do it a little later so that you can. But I'd love to have you come in and talk a little bit more about this historical stuff, a little bit more about the veteran stuff. And then like other stuff, like the city charter and things that are going on in Lawrence. You're one of the movers and shakers that is an anchor of Lawrence. You've been there since you were Tower Hill Mark. By the way, I'm gonna say it again, I like South Lawrence Mark much better than I liked Tower Hill Mark. We didn't always get along back then, but we both had a very different way of looking at things. And now we're both a little older and a little smarter and a little wiser. And I think we're both kind of more on the same page.
20 years, Tom, to answer your question. 20 years I've been on the council.
20 years.
Four on Tower Hill, 16 at South Florence East, and two more unless something incredibly bizarre happens in about 35 days.
Well, you're the historian. Are you the longest-running city councillor?
In the city's history.
I think you are.
In the city's history. Yeah, I am. Yeah.
Well then, you know what? Let me tell you something. If Brian DePina's sitting out there, Brian, none of this Nunez de Maca bullshit.
Ah, don't go there.
There really needs, at some point, needs to be something named after Michael Plant for all the things he did for our veterans. He's running around having things named for other people and he's not thinking of himself. And he's not a kind of city council like the other city councils mentioned.
Well, now you're telling him for the first time, right?
I am, I am. So thank you, Mark. I appreciate your time.
Thank you, Mark.
And please tell your wife I said hello.
Well, dear.
Alright, brother. Thanks.
Bye, thank you.
Bye.
I wasn't gonna say it while he was on the air, but let me, let's get the mirror off the, we have triple mirrors. It's like I'm on the, I'm on the evil enterprise. Let me tell you something else that I admire about Mark. I didn't want to say it while he was here because I didn't want to embarrass him. This is a guy who's a really good dad. I really admire people who spend an awful lot of time with their kids and teaching their kids. You know, a lot of parents let the internet and TV and the schools educate their kids. And Mark takes his kids all over the world. France, Normandy in France, in Africa, to all of these battlefields where Americans lost their lives, to all of these cemeteries where Americans are buried abroad. And I admire a lot that he and his wife, Mark and his wife, Sue, spent a lot of time trying to mentor their kids to be patriotic and understand the sacrifices that some of our veterans have made. I really admire it a lot and I see, I see it on Facebook a lot and it's something that nobody ever talks about. And so I just wanna, I wanna thank him for that. We're gonna bring up our guest, but I do want to chat with the intern girl while she's coming up. So a couple of things going on. You saw the Debo stuff, right? Isn't that great? Isn't that unbelievable?
I'm getting scared. You should be giving me... I'm getting scared, you should be giving me, you should be giving me like the lottery numbers, when like the Powerball was like a billion dollars. What's wrong with you? Give me some numbers.
I said a year ago on this show, a year ago, I said on this show, that I was gonna win the Supreme Court case. And when I did win the Supreme Court case, there was going to be a cascade. The minute that decision came down, here's what was gonna happen. She would no longer be the homeless coordinator for the city of Lawrence, she was gonna lose her hair salon. The, the, the non, the fake nonprofit that they were, that they were skewing from, uh, was gonna, was gonna fall apart. They were gonna end up divorced, they were gonna end up losing their house. Every single thing that we said happened in the order that I said it was going to happen. And now, all the people like Rich Russell, shame on you, Rich Russell, shame on you, Rich Russell.
What is the other one?
Shame, uh, D'Amico.
D'Amico, Lenin Roa, who called me. Ha, shame on him too.
I think Lenin, I think Lenin has seen the right, seen the light.
He understands.
I, I think he has too, but shame on Rich, and shame on all these veterans, 'cause if you don't know what's, what's going on. So, Debo came on, uh, Facebook this morning, I believe, and finally blew the lid on the fact that Kelly Frazier, the former homeless coordinator for the city of Lawrence, who I also said when I'm done with her, will be homeless, and now apparently she is. Um, hey, she's sleeping out of her car with her dog, um, which I almost feel bad about, but I don't.
I feel, I feel bad.
No, I don't feel bad. The woman tried to put me in prison for two and a half years on something she made up. Um, and cost me a lot of money, and, and on top of it. But on top of all that, now Debo's coming with receipts, now he's, now he's talking about how she was taking money from veterans. And when she got caught, she called it a loan, and she's not paying the families of these veterans back. And now that they've sold their home, 'cause they're breaking up, she's getting money from the equity in the home, but she's telling these veterans' families, uh, oh, I don't, I don't have it yet, it all went to my lawyers, and Debo's on Facebook posting copies of the checks. Oh, my god, you know?
Still sending him checks for the money that the veterans?
No, 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 so the checks are, they sold, they had to sell the house, 'cause they're breaking up, they're, they're getting divorced, right?
Yeah.
So, the money from, all the money that they owed in the house got paid to the banks or whatever, and those two checks.
Of the equity.
Uh, is what was left over that went to, fifty percent of it went to him, fifty percent went to her, 'cause they're breaking up.
Yeah.
But she's telling the veterans that she took money from, or the families of veterans she took money from, she can't pay them back yet, because she doesn't have any money yet from the equity in the home. And he's showing his checks on Facebook going, she got the checks, 'cause here's mine, she got hers the same day. And it's like, I don't know, I don't get, I don't even remember what the amount is, but it doesn't matter. And so here we have someone that was the homeless coordinator for Lawrence to try to get a two-hundred thousand dollar grant for her own nonprofit that she was using to exploit veterans, and I told you guys, I told you guys this was going on, and everybody was purposely closing their eyes going, oh, this is just personal, it's just Tom.
Let it go.
And let it, let you let it go.
Let it go, Tom.
And, and, and all of these people that made excuses, and you know, I can, I can forgive most of them, but I'm having a really hard time forgiving Rich Russell. Because you know what? That guy was my friend that I took care of for fifteen years, called him a hero in the Valley Patriot. Highlighted his, his, his heroism on the front page of the Valley Patriot. We gave him a public service award, and we gave him a hero veteran award. We called him up and we honored him at our bash on multiple occasions. I put him in my book, he's in my book, as a, as a hero veteran, and he is a hero veteran, he served in Vietnam honorably. But at one point, he was having a hard time, he didn't have a car, and he couldn't pay his rent, and he was worried about getting thrown under the street. So I called Kelly Frazier, and I said, as much as we don't like each other, we can go back to not liking each other after, but Rich deserves some help. You have a nonprofit, can you help the friggin' guy out? Like, this is what you say you're doing, and I don't care that you got a food pantry that's for veterans, that's not going to vet- I don't, I don't even care about all that stuff. Can you just help Rich? And she did, she went and she helped Rich, and she should get credit for helping Rich. But in the process of helping Rich, she turned Rich against me. All of a sudden, I was a piece of crap. And so when she started coming after me, and she's, and she started taking money from veterans and exploiting veterans, and exploiting the homeless. And exploiting her job at City Hall, and I started blowing the lid off of it, Rich took her side, Rich took her side. Now, here's a veteran, who hears a guy like me that's done nothing but good for him, that he has no reason to doubt, telling him she's exploiting veterans, she's exploiting the homeless, and he took her side. So I'm having a hard time with that, but it, 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 it's interesting now that, uh, people like Santiago and others who tried to take these people's side when it all started. Tom, why can't you just be friends? Just let it go, why can't you just, like, you know, it's this whole, we're gonna get into this in a second, why can't you just be nice? Because that's not my job. When I find out someone has a nonprofit and they're exploiting veterans, when I find out someone's a homeless coordinator and they're exploiting homeless people, my job is to call them out. It's a bonus that I don't like them, but don't you dare ever come back to me and say, you're just, you're just doing this 'cause you don't like them, like this, like I'm making it up because I'm mad at them, because they cut me off in the line of Dunkin' Donuts. And all those excuses, really, honest to God, they're infuriating, because you're allowing, as a veteran, Rich Russell, as a veteran, you allowed this woman to exploit other veterans, and you didn't care, 'cause you were getting yours. You didn't care because she was helping you pay your rent, you didn't care 'cause she helped you get a car. So you didn't care that she was hurting other veterans as long as she was helping you. Shame, shame. I hope he comes in, I hope, did he get knocked out?
I don't know, did he?
I think he got knocked out, but if he didn't, uh, of the, of the election, he ran for council, I think he got knocked out. He did get knocked out, well, good, I'm glad, I'm glad.
He was not even close.
Because you know what? He'd get on that council again, and he would do exactly what he did before. If you were on his side and he was benefiting from you, he'd look the other way, and if he wa- and if he wasn't benefiting from you, then he'd be attacking you. And shame on him, shame on Kelly, shame on all the people for the last year and a half that defended Kelly. And shame on everybody that comes on my page whenever I post about this and says, why didn't you let it go?
Tom, can you please let them go?
You know, it's, it's personal, well, you know, they can both be true at the same time. What I say about them can be true and news, and it is. And it can also be personal, but one does not negate the other, just because I get glee. And I'm gonna admit that I get glee in reporting the fact that these two are killing each other on Facebook, they're destroying themselves, their own reputations by doing what they're doing. And, and the fact that they're doing it, I'm gonna fully admit, I, I'd say total glee out of it. Because I told you guys this was coming when they came after me, but you know what I don't see? Here's what I don't see. I don't see the people that come on my page and tell me to let it go, going on their page and saying, why don't you let it, why are you attacking Tom Duggan? Why are you attacking each other? This is wrong, why don't you let it go?
You know what it is?
It's only me, it's only me.
To attack you, because you're not gonna be physical or threaten them physically, but I feel like what you do is lethal. They should be a little smarter.
Death by a thousand paper cuts, so I, one other thing that we're gonna get to, I guess, um, what, what do you got?
No, I just wanna say hi to everyone who's on Facebook, if you guys can please like, 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 and share, we have Mark Rivera. We have Marie Tebado.
I don't see, um, Juan De Santos's thing, is it coming up?
It's supposed to, yes.
I haven't seen it.
I'll, I'll take a look, um, we have June Fisher and Luis Robles, hi, June.
Luis Robles, we need to get him in.
Yes.
We absolutely have to get him in. Uh, okay, one real quick thing that we have a guest in the studio that we're gonna spend a little bit of time with. Um, so I was, I've been going to some fundraisers now, I've been to three fundraisers all year so far. I feel really bad that next week, um, on next, next Thursday, Giovanni Rodriguez is having his fundraiser. I really wanted to go and get up and endorse him.
Yeah.
And at the same night is, uh, the future Mrs. Duggan, Yonel, Yonel De Santos.
Yeah.
For Central District Council in Methuen, um, who I am gonna marry someday. Um, she's having her fundraiser, and I can't get to that one either, because next Thursday night is the Isaiah Fifty-Eight fundraiser for the homeless in Salem, New Hampshire. Uh, in fact, I think the event's in, in Atkinson, but, but Isaiah is in Salem. Um, and every year Carrie Wyland invites me to this event, and every year I go, and you know who usually sits with me, it's hilarious. I have so much fun. Jean Shaheen, the ultra Democrat, ultra-left-wing senator, always comes and sits at my table with me. And we chat, she always comes over, she goes, oh, you're my Republican friend, and then we sit there and just throw jabs at each other, and it's fucking hilarious. Um, but I, I always go.
There it is.
Okay, uh, thank you very much. Um, uh, so I always like to go to this, and I really wish that I could go to Yoneldas. Uh, here's what I am gonna do, I'm gonna send some friends, um, and I'm also gonna send a check, um, because I, I really want her to win, as well as Luanne. Um, she's running in the Central District, but I was at an event last night, so I've been to three events, I went to, I went to, what was even?
Monday.
What was Monday, Monday, oh, Patricia Valley.
Patricia Valley.
Who I wrote a check to, I just mean, full disclosure, I wrote her a check. Uh, Patricia Valley, I was at, last night, Ryan DeZoglio, and I was at one other prior to that. Oh, Lu, uh, your friend, uh, John Regal.
Oh, John Regal.
So I've been to three events all year, and mostly because of my health, I would go to all of them, if I felt good enough to go to all of them, I would cancel other things to go. Um, but sometimes I can't, in fact, I was supposed to be at the mayor's this morning.
We're still friends, we'll see after the elections.
Oh, and I went to Run Marson, I went to Florida. Um, and I was supposed to be at the mayor's, uh, endorsement, he got endorsed today by Paul Tucker, the sheriff, uh, Carpenter, he got endorsed by
Paul Tucker?
Yep, Congressman Laurie Trahan.
Wow.
Um, and here's the big shocker, 'cause we all know behind the scenes, they don't get along, Pavel Pajano endorsed the mayor this morning.
No way.
I think that's bigger, Pavel Pajano endorsing him is way bigger than Laurie Trahan, Paul Tucker, and Carpenter all together, all put together.
I don't know, a Paul Tucker one is good.
Yeah?
No?
Just, just, just turn me?
Yeah.
I'd like to see him start, you know, finish that.
He's, he's, he sees what's happening on the back end.
Yeah, well, he needs to start finishing that investigation into Debo and Kelly, that's what he needs to do.
Okay, oh, and also Diana DeZoglio?
And Diana DeZoglio, stay at Arden, that was, that was the other big one. So, uh, I was at an event last night, it was at my fourth event last night for Ryan DeZoglio, and I met a bunch of people, and I posted pictures and everything. But I ended up meeting, and I'm not gonna say her name, 'cause I don't wanna humiliate her, uh, secretly, I kinda really do, but I'm not going to. Um, so I met a candidate that doesn't like me, and has never liked me, and is, is, is an educator, uh, running for office. And, um, she came over to say hi to me. Methuen.
Okay.
So she came over, she was, she's the typical left-wing educator, who is, I'm gonna say left-wing, that's all I can say, because that should tell you everything you need to know about them, right? So she comes over, we were having a pleasant conversation, and she said, you know, and I said to her, listen, I had to post something about you a couple of weeks ago. It wasn't really about you, it was about someone else, but you were kinda there, and I had, you know, it wasn't about you, and I want you to know that I have no animosity toward you whatsoever, and she said, well, people keep telling me to come over and talk to you, so I wanted to come over and talk to you, it's only fair. That, you know, I hear all these things about you, I should at least come over and say hi, so we chatted, it was nice, it was a very pleasant conversation, and I enjoyed it. I also found myself, and I don't know why I do this sometimes, I found myself trying really hard to convince her I was a nice guy. And when the conversation was over, I was a little disappointed in myself, 'cause I'm like, why did I do that? Like, why did I? I think it's 'cause I'd written somewhat negative things about her, I wanted her to know that it wasn't personal, that it was just me doing my job, right? But I, I think I, I think I overcorrected, and I think I tried too hard to get her to like me, and I, and I.
Is she a redhead?
No.
Oh, that's weird.
And I convinced myself during the conversation, while we were having this back and forth, it was very pleasant, I convinced myself that I'd gotten through to her.
Okay.
That like, that I'd gotten through to her, that like, you know, you're gonna, she's gonna get elected, 'cause of what her name is, right? As we're talking, I, I, I convinced myself that I'm getting through to her, and maybe we can have a good relationship moving forward, 'cause she is gonna get elected. So I said, and then I've been thinking about this all night, so I said, hey, let's do a selfie. And you should have seen her face drop when I said it, and she couldn't get away from me fast enough. Like, she, she, it was, it was like Road Runner, she like, she lived, she left skid marks on the floor running away. No, 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 I, I, listen, oh, look, I, look at the time, I gotta go, and she was out the door, and I was like, wow. And while we were talking, she said something else that's been bothering me all night. She said, I can't wait to get to my guest, 'cause this is gonna be hilarious. She said, can I ask you something? Can I ask you to do me a favor? And I was like, oh, this is gonna be good, 'cause this is someone who obviously hates me, right? She said, that wonderful girl that you have working for you, that wonderful woman, that you call, what do you call her? It's so demeaning. Intern girl. You call her intern, it's so demeaning, can't you call her something else? Can't you call her, um, Mrs. Intern? Can't you call her something that's, that's a little bit more prestigious? And I said, the same thing, like, this is the same thing I do, I hear this all the time about Jane Azani, I said, she likes being called intern girl. Yeah, but you need to like, ask her if it's okay to change, 'cause you know, it's just, it's demeaning. And so we had this little back and forth, and I kept saying to her, like, not for anything, this is like a left-wing educator who works in the schools. Who thinks that we should call men women and give them their preferred pronouns, because that's what they want to be called. But on the other hand, you want to be called intern girl, and she doesn't want me calling you that. And after, after we had this conversation, she walked away, I started thinking, that's what liberalism is. It's getting people to conform, or, or they won't think of you as nice. They use nice, they use nice as a way of getting you to conform to what they or the mob wants you.
It's bullying.
What, what the crowd wants you to do, want you to say or do, say it the way they want you to say it. And you know, things are subjective, calling you intern girl is not objectively demeaning, right? Calling you a bitch might be objectively demeaning, but calling you intern girl is not objectively demeaning, it depends on the person. Some women might be very offended by that, if you call them intern girl. But who the hell is anyone else? What businesses of anybody else's to say what you should want to be called? I thought about it all night, like, it really, it, it bugged me all night that we had this conversation. And by the way, I'm, I'm only not telling her name, 'cause I don't want it to be like I'm attacking her.
No, no, no.
It was a very nice, very pleasant conversation that just bothered me afterwards, like, during the conversation, I had to think about it. Then she walked away, and I got in my car, I was leaving, and I went, wait a minute, hold on a second.
Well, you know, Tom, hi, everyone.
There's, there she is, intern girl, god, I love her.
Everyone is entitled to their own opinion, right?
Wait, we have an intern girl cam?
Yes, you didn't realize that?
No. Thank you, Nick Maxwell is a great co- great assistant producer, production assistant, whatever, whatever we're calling him.
Whatever he is, the director, there you go. Um, everyone's entitled to their own opinion, but I love being called intern girl, it makes me feel young, makes me feel like I'm learning something new, if I was in college. It brings me back to those ages where everything was just free and wild and no responsibility, so I love that name, I really do. Everyone calls me that, everyone knows me for that, so, yay, let's go back to you.
All right, okay, so let's get to our guest, 'cause we've already burned like way too much time here with the market, all the, all the cylinders.
I know.
Uh, and we, I have so much more I really wanna talk about, but in the studio today, boy, do I have a great guest for you guys. Um, here, here's, so here's what's interesting, my guest today, uh, to my left, to your right, is Kristen Maxwell, she's a member of the Methuen School Committee. She's someone that I did not know until very recently, I was watching a meeting, and I saw Dan Shabilia and Laurie Keegan, two other members of the committee bullying her at the table, and I thought, I remember the days of Jana Dina Tally. When Jana Dina Tally was sitting there, and Jim Jajuga and a few other school board members ganged up on her. And that's how Jana and I became friends, I called her after that meeting and said, I hate when people get bullied. Tell me the background on this, I wanna help you, and I did. It got me sued, by the way, cost me about thirty thousand dollars. But, uh, yeah, 'cause I got, I got sued by Jim Jajuga, that's why I wrote, I wrote that column about Jim Jajuga because he was bullying Jana Dina Tally.
Wasn't he at the Marson thing?
He was, he was at, he was at the mayor's thing today too. Um, he's been showing up a lot lately. Um, so the long story short, I, I saw that Kristen was getting bullied by Dan. Now, it's one thing to have Laurie Keegan bullying you, she's bullying some, she's bullying her because Laurie is, uh, uh, a defender of the insiders, right? She's the mouth of the administration, so she's running interference for Brandy Quang, and I got that. And she's a woman, so I'm okay with it, because it's a woman bullying a woman, but the sexist in me, the, the chauvinist in me sees Dan Shabilia bullying a woman, and that bothered me. So after that first meeting that I saw that happen, I reached out to Kristen and I said, I don't know if you even know who I am, a lot of people in Methuen talk bad about me behind my back, and you probably don't like what you've heard, but could you just give me the back, like, what's going on with the schools? I haven't really paid much attention. Um, I'd never written anything about Brandy Quang up until very recently, it wasn't really on my radar screen, other than the parents that have been calling me for three years, I've been saying on this show, about parents calling me about all the transgender bullshit in the Methuen schools. And all of the sex talk in the classroom, and boys going to girls bathrooms, and all that other stuff. Um, and other, but I've never mentioned Brandy, right? We've talked about the complaints, but we've never talked. So we had, my, long story short, I had a conversation with Kristen. Um, I started asking her for documents, she started showing me online where I could find some things, I started watching meetings. And boy, have I gotten myself an education over the last couple, at we, at least the last year. Because I'm watching the city council slash school committee joint meeting the other night in Methuen about the audit that they paid a hundred and forty thousand dollars for.
An audit for a hundred and forty thousand dollars?
Yeah, of the school, so it's not a financial audit, it was like a performance audit.
Yeah.
But it wasn't really an audit, right? They went and they surveyed people, and they asked teachers, well, what do you think? And then wrote it down, and then gave us the results. I could have done that for fifty grand, like, you guys could have given me.
Google form.
Right.
Done it, done it that way.
So I'm watching the meeting, and every single deficiency that this audit company came out and said was wrong with the Methuen schools, I checked my notes, and damn it, wouldn't you know, Kristen Maxwell has talked about every single one of these deficiencies over the last two years. So I said, you know what? This week is the audit, we gotta have Kristen on, she can talk about her reelection, but what I really wanted to do is to talk about the audit. So welcome to the show, tell people a little bit about who you are, why you're running for reelection, we're gonna get right into, right?
Welcome in. So, I'm super nervous, I get really nervous on camera.
Just remember that you just, it's like the two of us, it's just the two of us on the deck of Salvatore, she's sitting at the next table listening.
Yeah, there you go, I'm nosy. Um, so, Kristen Maxwell, um, I moved here about seven or eight years. So Kristen Maxwell, I moved here about seven or eight years ago, and I was really looking forward to Methuen, I was looking forward to my kids growing up in this city, I thought that, you know, it would be community friendly. I loved the idea of what was behind Methuen. And then, you know, I got them into schools, and I joined the PTO, I was on the school council, I got involved in sports groups. I'm just really involved. And then I had to just kind of put my own kids aside and think about all of the kids, because there was just so much that could be different. I've been involved in two other school districts, my middle daughter went to school in Medford, my older daughter went to school in Medford and in Naples, Florida. So I see the difference between the schools. So, yeah.
So you got involved as a parent, right? And you started going to PTO meetings, you started getting involved that way. And you noticed that there were deficiencies going on, deficiencies going on in the schools. What made you, because I didn't know you back then, what made you want to run for school committee? Given that, like, you're not an educator, you've never been a principal, like, we've got a member of the committee, Martha's a principal, right? She's a longtime educator, she's got this in her blood, she's been doing this forever.
Martha wasn't a principal, Mary Beth was.
I'm sorry, that's what I meant, Mary Beth. I had Martha on the brain from our last conversation. Mary Beth Donovan Grassy, how many names does she have now? Mary Beth Donovan, Grassy, Wanda Santos, you just keep going, like. You women with your 15 different names, I like to mark it, because I find it amusing, but I find everything amusing. What I was saying is that there are others on the committee, and others in other communities that have like, lots of educational background, working in schools, being a principal, being a teacher, being an assistant. And you're just a parent, like Jana DiNatali was, when she ran. And I see a lot of similarities between you and Jana. And I, so I'm interested in what made you want to run, like, what made you think, well, you know what I should do? I should run for school committee, because most people want nothing to do with politics, rightfully so, because the minute you step in, you become a target, people attack you, they attack your family, we saw what Dan Shabilia has done to you. We saw what Laurie's done to you, we've seen what some of the people in the administration have done to you, when they went to the Eagle Tribune and just made stuff up about you. What made you want to step into this arena?
So I mean.
There was something wrong with you, maybe?
I mean, maybe. No, I mean, I'm a mom first, before anything else, and I think that's where that came from. I also help run a summer camp during the summers, I've been doing that for four to five years, and I see the struggles that the kids are going through. That bothered me, the bullying in the schools was my main motivator to get going, it was.
Was it because your kids were being bullied, or just something you saw?
It was just stories that were being told, I mean, you know, when you're on the PTO, you talk to other moms, you know, you talk to teachers, you talk to, you talk to everybody, you talk to everybody in the community. And to hear the things that were going on, when I would address them as just a parent and ask questions, it was pretty much, I mean, not in so many words, but pretty much like a because I said so. And I just don't do well with because I said so. I don't have to like the reason, but give me the why behind the no.
At least it'll make sense to you why they think they're doing it that way.
Correct.
And I tell that to people all the time, like, I don't have to like the answer, but can you at least tell me why? Explain it to me why.
So, I mean, and I'm just a very honest and direct person, I know that, you know, a lot of people don't like that, because I don't say things politically correct.
Welcome to my world.
I just throw it out there the way I mean it, so you never have to translate what I'm saying, because I'm saying it exactly as I mean it. And, you know, people say they respect that and they like that, but when you're fighting for... I always believe in what's right. It doesn't have to be my way, it doesn't have to be what I like, but if it's right, it's right, if it's wrong, it's wrong. And there was a lot wrong. And that's kind of where I started, I mean, I wrote some stuff down, because I am so terrible.
Feel free to use notes, I'm okay with that.
I spent a lot of time writing this, and it was supposed to be like the perfect political statement, but the truth is, is I'm not a politician.
But that's what I like about you, one of the things that I enjoyed watching at the meeting is you would just say what you thought. Like, Dan Shabilia will sit there and he'll, he'll do this, he'll lick his finger, hold it to him to see like, where everybody falls before he takes a position, kind of like the Nick Dzoglio thing. Where he's got to position himself the right way, because it's all about his image, and you were just like, no, I think that's dumb. I was like, oh, that's great, I love that.
Yeah, I do it because it's, I don't have to agree with everybody else to have a difference of opinion. I mean, actually, I, there's a, there's a good quote, and you might actually find this interesting. An environment that is not safe to disagree is not an environment focused on growth, it's an environment focused on control.
Right.
And that's very much where this all came from, this is where I started, it's where, I don't know, I just believe in doing the right thing. Again, I'm a mom, I say it like it is. And for as long as I can remember, I mean, even as a little girl, I just wanted to make a difference. I just wanted to do something of purpose. You know, my kids, I have my kids, I love my kids, but it's bigger than my kids, and I want kids to have someone that they can go to where they feel safe, or supported, or oh my gosh, something's happening, and I have no one to tell, because no one's listening to me. You know, when you, when you hear stories that kids are being bullied at school, and they're telling their teachers, and their teachers are saying, oh, you know, they'll move on to somebody next time, or don't worry about it, and you're just, you're degrading, you know, you're you're putting down how they are feeling. And then the kids go home, and they tell their mom or their dad, and their mom and dad is like, well, if you told the teacher, you know, hit them back. You know, because, like, what else are they gonna do? You're not stepping in, and you're just teaching them to, you know.
Take it.
Take it.
And then you have the ridiculous liberal ideology that has now invaded all of the public schools, which is what they call zero tolerance, which is just lazy. Because if a kid bullies another kid, and the kid being bullied hits back, they both pay a penalty.
Right.
Right, so you're teaching, but this is the same thing that liberals try to do with taking away guns, they don't want anyone to ever defend themselves. They think somehow all violence is bad, and they treat the bad guy the same as the good guy who's defending himself. And I tell every parent, like, you know, if your kid's being bullied, the schools aren't doing anything about them, tell them to hit the kid back, I really don't care.
I mean, it's so sad.
I don't care if that offends your liberal sensibilities, that's life. If I'm out in the community, and I see someone hit someone else, and no one intervenes to stop it, the guy getting hit's gonna fight back.
Right.
And if you don't, that's how you end up dead.
Well, and it's sad when we're rewarding bad behavior, when the, you know, kids that are well behaved, and not, you know, they're not getting prizes for being well behaved, the kids that are, you know, poorly, they're making bad choices. And when they make good choices, they're getting rewarded. But the kids who make the good choices all along, it's just like, oh, well, you know.
So that translates to the other stuff in the classroom, too, that you've seen, and I think, and we've talked a little bit about it, we had a great, like, four-hour four-hour lunch the other day on the Deco Salvatores, where we talked about a lot of this stuff. And I went back, and I watched some of the older meetings after we met and we talked. And it really gave me a really good snapshot on how well of a handle you have on what's going on in the schools and what's wrong with the schools. Because the things that you were saying back in December of last year, and November of last year, the audit team said on Tuesday night, or Wednesday night, Tuesday night, right?
Yeah.
So I'm watching the audit guy talk about the bullying, the deficiencies in bullying, and how we've only got one person handling bullying. Though I think, I think he said, you can correct me in the exact number, but I know I'm in the ballpark, like, 39 complaints of bullying, and they only sustained like, five or 10, five or nine in an entire school system, which we all know is just bullshit, we all know that. Just do the math in your head, you know that that's wrong. And you've been trying to call that out now for a while, and no one would listen to you. Like, if, they could have saved themselves $140,000, had they just listened to what you've been saying all along. But maybe it's good, maybe it's good that they spent this money to have an outside person come in and say it, because now they can't deny it, right? You've been saying it, now they're saying it, now it has to be addressed.
I mean, and that's the, it's a shame that the audit came out the way it did. I was kind of hoping that it came out, and it was an aha moment for me, meaning like, oh, Kristen, you're wrong, everything's great.
Right.
But it came out, and a lot of the issues that I've been bringing up and bringing forward for years, I mean, you know, you mentioned earlier the letter about, from the teachers, and it was like, I feel for the teachers, and I respect their opinion, and if that's how they felt, then that's how they felt. I, you know, I have nothing bad to say about any of our teachers.
But that was a political hit, you know that, explain to people at home what happened. So you were on Facebook, and somebody, you saw somebody ask a question about, I'm thinking of moving to Methuen, putting my kid in the Timney school?
Timney.
Timney school, what are your thoughts? And you went on and said, go somewhere else, and the teachers flipped the F out. They flipped out, and they, they didn't just flip out in their own educational bubble like they normally do. They ran to the Eagle Tribune to try and damage you politically, like, they used their public position as teachers to try to hurt you politically, to try and hurt you with your voters by mischaracterizing what you were doing.
So I think that a lot of them, because I have spoken to a lot of them, I think that a lot of them were misunderstood what was going on, I don't think they actually had the information for themselves. And I tell everybody, talk to me for yourself, and if you still don't like me, don't, you know, I'm okay with that. But behind that, when I made the comment, and I know everybody says you're a political figure, even though you say, oh, I'm just a mom, but like, I made that comment from my personal page, and there was a mom who posted moving into the district, wondering if I can get some feedback. There was some positive feedback, there was some negative feedback, there was, you know, whatever. I had commented, simply, look elsewhere. And it wasn't directed at the Timney or the teachers, because I have been the teacher's biggest advocate, I love.
Yeah, where'd that catch you?
Well, you know what, it got me, it got me here.
Not an endorsement, not an endorsement.
But I don't necessarily want an endorsement.
But my point is that you went to, as I did, right, I wrote an editorial, Tom Duggan, the right-wing lunatic, Tom Duggan, the Trump-supporting, right-wing, anti-teachers union, anti-public-school nut, defended the Methuen teachers, and you know where it got me? They were bad-mouthing me with all the candidates that were going in, right? Right, exactly right, Intern girl. And they were bad-mouthing me, and it goes to show what kind of people they are, it goes beyond their job now. And you have been their biggest advocate, and look at the way they've treated you. Now, some of them individually behind the scenes, but those are cowards. If they're gonna tell you behind the scenes, you know, we're really with you, while they're signing letters to the Eagle Tribune, while they're among their colleagues bad-mouthing you, or allowing other people to badmouth you without defending you, those are cowards, they're not really on your side.
I think there are some bad apples, of course. I think that teachers really, they're working, they're overburdened, they are forced to follow these rules that they may not even believe in themselves, they are forced to... They're in a tough spot, because they have to do their job, or they'll lose their job. And I, you know, I respect them for that, I respect the... They did send me an email after the endorsement, and they did, you know, let me know that, you know, unfortunately, they're, you know, however it played out, it played out, and they.
How long did you talk to them?
I talked to them during my interview? I talked to them for about an hour and a half.
Everyone else was like, 20 minutes. So you gave them an hour and a half of your time, you've advocated for them, and when it was all over, they knifed you in the back.
But I don't care, I mean, I don't care, I truly don't care.
But the voters should care, the voters should care, because it shows what kind of a public advocate you are for the teachers and the voters, despite, it's not like you're Dan Shabilia, where you're advocating for them because they're throwing you love all the time, and they're endorsing you, and they're calling you.
Oh, I'll always advocate for them.
Right, but that's my point, is that the voters need to understand what kind of a person you are, besides the political stuff, is that they screwed you, and they screwed you hard in the Eagle Tribune, then they screwed you again with the endorsement, and you're still their biggest advocate. That says a lot about you, and it says an awful lot about them, which I'll focus on on another day. But it says an awful lot about you, and I think that the voters need to understand that. I also would like you to talk about some of the things that you've advocated over the last year that have not been fixed, that have not been done, that the new committee members, all of whom are going to be listening, you know, my buddy Alejandro Baez that I'm supporting, Maria Figueroa, who has to win, please, one of your six votes has to go to Maria Figueroa, she has to win. The people that are running, and Ken Willett, the people that are running that don't know the inner workings and how they work, you're going to be their mentor, right? You're going to go from the new person to, you're going to be the OG in January if you get reelected. And they need to hear this stuff, they need to hear, rather than going back and watching hours and hours and hours of meetings over the last two years. They need to hear about it from you, you're going to be their mentor.
Yeah. I mean, a lot of the problems and issues that I brought forward were, I mean, I talked about the morale, I want you to understand where I'm coming from, too, because I was a parent before I was a school committee member, so I didn't realize that it was a district problem. So when I.
What do you mean district, what is this district stuff?
So Methuen is a district, Methuen's school district.
Oh, she had the city?
Yes, but it's like, the schools are a district.
Because people at home go, well, what district, what does she mean district? Are they part of like, another community, or?
No, so I.
Citywide.
Citywide, so from the jump, I just assumed it was my kid's school, and through the audit, we did find out, and actually, last year in April, it was said that the Timney is the, you know, worst performing school in the district. But I did bring up like, the lack of support the teachers get, the morale, the morale, I mean, what happened to the days where the kids were skipping down the hallway and they were high-fiving each other? They're not allowed to do that anymore, you can't be happy, there's no field.
Yeah, there's no, go ahead.
There's no field trips, field trips are so important to social development, because I remember being a kid, going to the cash register, handing them the money, how was your day, did you have fun today?
Or just leaving Methuen in general, go to Boston, get the, you know.
Well, not even that.
Museum of science.
Kids don't know how to talk to each other anymore. So when you have field trips, and they're going on these field trips, they're having conversations with people that aren't with them every single day. So, you know.
But it's not just field trips, you can't even have Christmas, Halloween. Brandy Quang has sanitized that school system, so that, I mean, what kid would want to learn in that environment? I mean, I think of my childhood, I could tell you, every field trip I went on in grammar school, and I don't remember a whole lot about my grammar school time, because I'm an old man now, but, I mean, you know, I was around when they were inventing fire. But I can tell you, I remember every single field trip that I went on, because they were special. It was a day out of school that you were with your classmates, like you said.
They're coming back.
Right, they're coming back, because Brandy's leaving, that's why they're coming back.
Well, and I feel like I had, so when I first got on the committee, I was on the holiday celebration committee before I was on the school committee. And I went for that, because I don't believe that we shouldn't be celebrating certain holidays, like the secular holidays, like Valentine's Day, and St. Patrick's Day, or Hanukkah, or Christmas, or Ramadan, or, you know, all of the, why not? Why can't we educate all of, all of the kids in all of these holidays, and it's fun? It's, you know, you may get to know Tommy, and wow, Tommy, that's so cool, I didn't even know that that was a thing, I just opened Christmas presents every, you know.
Who knew that Babu was Hindu, and what Hinduism was, right? Like, who knew? But this kid sits next to you every single day, and then all of a sudden, his holiday comes, and you learn, oh my God, this guy sees the world a little differently than me. I think that's also done on purpose, I think the public schools do it on purpose, because they're trying to, they're trying to homogenize everybody, they're trying to get everybody to be the same. They want them all to be a bunch of robots, that all think exactly the same.
So that was my, I mean, that's what I hated, I hated that. I don't want kids to just go to school, sit down, shut up, and listen, like, that's not the point, that's not how you're going to learn. But it brings me back to the holiday celebration, I went in there, and I was like, why can't we do this? So we then had a meeting with our, you know, our attorney, and we were told a bunch of, a bunch of stuff, and for a few years, I was told that we couldn't have them because they weren't allowed, like, they just weren't allowed. However, we learned that we can have them, we just can't push a certain religion, we just can't push a certain belief. But we can, in fact, educate all of them. So that was huge to me, that was a big win, because now, like, that, you know, that started, all that stuff's started to come back, we now have Valentine's Day. It's not called Kindness Day anymore.
Jesus Christ.
So that was great, do I think that Kindness Day should exist? Yeah, I think Kindness Day should happen every day. But, you know, it's just sad.
And I'm okay with Teacher Appreciation Day, there are some great teachers.
There are.
There are some amazing teachers, and I don't get to say this enough, so I'm going to say it today. There are some amazing teachers in the Methuen schools that do heroic work every single day with these kids, despite the fact that the administration doesn't support them, despite the fact that the parents aren't supporting them, despite the fact that the kids don't want to be there, despite the fact that they're in an environment that does not foster learning, and these kids can't read, and there's too many kids in the classroom, and despite all this, you still have a small group of teachers out there that do really heroic work.
They do.
And we should be doing more for those teachers, and not the teachers that think their job is to teach the whole child, and let the boys go in the girls' bathrooms, and teach them sex in third grade, and all the political baloney that schools have become, because, and you're sick of hearing this, but the people at home, I'm sure, are not. And that's that, when all this stuff starts to happen, I go back to one thing and one thing only. How come you can't teach kids to read? Right, I mean, I have kids who graduated Methuen High School, or in Methuen High School, that come on my page on a regular basis to argue with me, I'm like the Charlie Kirk of the Mary McValley sometimes. They'll come on, and they'll argue with me about global warming, and you'd be amazed at how well-versed these Methuen kids are at gay marriage, global warming, abortion, all of the political left-wing issues. They are fully versed and can have a two-hour discussion, a respectful discussion with you. But then you ask them, can you tell me three of the five rights in the First Amendment to the Constitution? They can't. They also think that hate speech is exempt from free speech. They also can't do math in their head, they also can't read at grade level, they also can't do, don't know anything about the difference between a proton and a neutron, they know nothing about history, other than white privilege and slavery. And I sit back, and I just go, so the schools can teach them something. They're teaching them about abortion, they're teaching them Trump's a Nazi, they're teaching them all this other stuff, but they're not. but they're not teaching them how to friggin' read. And at the end of the day, I think that's what people like you are trying to do, I think people like Ken Willett are also trying to do that. And in a lot of ways, I'm gonna give her credit, although she probably hated them giving her credit, but I think Mary Beth Donovan-
I think Mary Beth Donovan is making a lot of progress.
I don't agree with a lot of what she says, because she comes from a very liberal, pro-public education background. But you see the things that she's fighting for, and the things she says she's fighting for, and she does walk the walk, and I respect that a lot.
Yeah, yeah, I mean, the literacy, I mean, I've questioned the literacy rates for years, I mean, I just, I see, I have a different view on that, and I have the parent view on that, and I have a lot of parent friends in Methuen, so I know, I know more. The problem I have with the extra stuff is, is before you bring in these mental health programs, and before you bring, and I, believe me, I'm 100% a supporter in mental health, but before you bring in these extracurricular things, let's focus on the reading and the writing, and the math, and, you know, I just wanna bring it back to reading, writing, and math. I also, and I don't know if I should even say this, but I hate computers, I hate that they do so much work on computers.
Well, you know why?
Why?
So this is something that every educator should know, and you guys should all be doing research, don't believe me, fact-check me if you want. The Microsoft, and Bill Gates, and all these computer companies donate these computers to the schools so they can track your kids. And they do track your kids, and they lie and say that they don't.
They buy them.
But, well, whether they buy them or they get donated, I know a lot, in Lawrence, they're all donated, in Methuen, maybe they're not. But they, they want your kids to be using these computers, because it dumbs them down, right, they can't, it's one of the reasons they can't do math in their head, spell check, they can't write. If you gave them a piece of paper and a pen, and said, write a paragraph-
You wouldn't know who your non-readers are.
A hundred percent.
And non-spellers are.
And they also track these kids, because while they're using the computer at school, you know they're surfing, you know they're going to Google, they're looking up things that they're interested in, and it tells these, and it tracks them, and it tracks them by name, because it gives them an email that they can use at home, so now they're tracking them at home, and that's all 100% true. Do not email me and tell me it's not true unless you Google it and you fact-check it, because it's 100% true.
Yeah, I mean, we have, we have this system where we do have these, you know, where-
They can just go surfing on anything, on the computers.
Right, I mean, there are blockers, there are blockers. My thing is, is the literacy rates, and why I was questioning them to begin with, because I think I got a lot of heat for that, like, I didn't know what I was doing, I was uneducated, I was, you know, an idiot, I was all of these things, but when it came down to it, at the end of the day, like, you look at, and it's a problem every time I bring it up, you look at your MCAS scores, and our district is, it's a tough number, it's a tough pill to swallow, grades three through eight is at 27%, or somewhere around those, I mean, last year, I know it was 34%, so I'll go with last year. We're reading at grade level. Now, when we get our assessments from within the district, those are, we're told that that is what tests reading. Well, when you look up MCAS, MCAS is literally a literacy test, it tests your reading, it tests your writing, I mean, it is literally a literacy test, so-
And what most people don't understand about MCAS is, MCAS does not measure the students, it measures the teachers. It measures whether the teachers did their, okay, I don't want to take credit for any of this.
I wanted to mention that, because I know that parents are, a lot of parents are against MCAS, because my kids don't test well, my kids, those are the ones that you want testing, because it shows where the gaps are, it shows what we need to focus more on, it shows, when your kid doesn't do well on the MCAS, it is not at all a reflection on your child, it's a reflection on, maybe not the teachers even, maybe it's the curriculum, maybe it's the district as a whole, where do we need to focus more time so that you are able to develop those skills? So, as much as we took away the requirement for graduation for MCAS, I would be a huge advocate in keeping the MCAS, because it's the only test that tests for competency.
And that's why the teachers' unions fought so hard, for so long, against it, that's why. Because they don't wanna be measured, they don't wanna be held accountable, there are no standard accountability measures for teachers that don't do their job. And we could talk later on, why they can't do their job, there are, they do have, there are some good excuses, there are some good reasons. The state does not really allow you to discipline some kids, right, it makes it harder when you get disruptive kids in the classroom, that you can't remove. But a lot of it too is the fact that these teachers are focusing on politics, and sex, and a lot of this other crap, and they're not, listen, first day, first class of every day, the kid should sit down, and they should be reading aloud. When I was growing up, not that long ago, kid in the first row read the first paragraph, and the kid in the next, and the teacher could easily identify which kids were having a hard time reading, and then put a plan together for that kid to bring them up, bring them up to speed. Instead, we pass kids along that can't pass the material, to the next, to the next grade.
Well, we're actually testing their reading ability, and we're getting those numbers as a school committee, and those are the numbers that, those are our literacy rates, but those tests that we're doing, the benchmark, Dreambox assessment, and our DIBELS assessment, those are supposed to be going home to parents every three months, and from what I'm told, they are as a school committee member, but like I said before, I do have a lot of friends, and I hear a lot that they are not sent home, and and for myself, as a parent, not as a representative of the schools, I've gotten those test results, and they do show that my kids need help, and they do show that my kids are significantly behind. And when I ask, you know, well, based off of your tests, your tests are showing me that they in fact do need help, when I ask that, you know, the teachers, or whoever I ask that to is, well, hmm, those tests really aren't a good measurement. Well, then why are we doing them? Why are we using those as our literacy rates?
Now, Intern Girl's got two kids in the Methuen schools.
Have you received your assessments every three months?
No, not yet.
So September, I think it was like September 23rd, that's when they-
Okay, no, not yet.
I would love to know how many parents are getting those.
We have reader questions?
Yes, we have some questions, I also wanna say hi to a couple of people here that are saying hi to Kristen. We have Maria Figueroa, he said hi, Kristen.
Hi, Maria.
She has to win, folks, you have six votes in Methuen, Maria's gotta get one of your votes, she needs to win.
We have Jana, watching as well.
Which Jana, the sexiest woman alive?
She said hi, Kristen. Hillary Steele, it says, hi, Kristen. Let me see, we have Bill Scottfield, in which school, which school had the lowest survey score, he said the Timmy. Ryan Dazolio said, thank you so much for coming, for coming last night, and then we have Hillary Steele, she said, with the removal of the MCAS requirement, will children now, will children who take the MCAS out, I don't know what that out means, sorry, now be able to- Oh, alternative, now be able to graduate with a diploma from their high school, rather than a certificate, and Ken Willett says hi.
So there, I mean, there are requirements, the, those are, there's still a requirement. I think the requirement isn't the same, it's just, you know, are you passing certain English-
Yeah, but the MCAS part is no longer a requirement for a diploma, correct?
Correct.
Okay, so it's not, Hillary-
Teachers got rid of it.
Yeah, and then we have John Drew, she's saying hi, Kristen.
Hi, John.
John's got a good shot, John's got a good, he's gonna be a force to be reckoned with on the ballot.
Okay.
I think him and Wanda Santos are fighting neck and neck for that, for that third spot.
I like John, John's my type of guy, he's a dad-first.
Who's, there's six in that race, right, it's Jana, oh, it's Jana, Ryan, John, Wanda, Cirillo. Who am I forgetting? Someone else in that race, there's six.
James, Jimmy-
Oh, Jim Sossioni, how could I forget Jim? He's, I think he's coming on, we definitely have to have him on.
Okay.
Before we, so you get on the school committee, and you think as a parent, everyone on the committee's like me, we all just care about the kids, and then all of a sudden, you have your first couple of meetings, and you see that there are people sitting at the table, who are really only there to advocate for the insiders, and to stop the parents from finding out information, and stop the public from finding out information. How infuriating was that, as just a regular, non-political person? And how did you handle that? I'm always interested in how non-political people, who step into this arena, because it's a dirty business, and once you open your eyes and realize how dirty it is for the first time, you must have been like gone home and cried, and said, I don't wanna do this anymore, right? Like, did you really?
Yeah, I mean, as soon as, so, I mean, that letter that was written about me, it was forty teachers that teach at my kid's school.
Yeah, shame on the Tribune for doing that, that was just, it was a political hit, somebody knew somebody over at the Tribune, and they did that for them.
So that was, that was a huge hit to me, and I'm like, but why, you know, you guys all see what I see, why, why are you doing this, pretty much? And it was just like, I wanna help so bad.
You're like, it's true, so why are they, like, genuinely, like, why are they denying it?
They actually quoted in that letter, saying, you know, why is she talking badly about us during a time where there's low morale, teacher retention, and low test scores, and that's exactly what I was advocating for. But, you know, and I tell people all the time, like, don't listen to other people's opinions of me, because if they don't like me, they have a good reason, I'm sure, right? But judge me based off of me, because I, you may, you may be like, wow, this, this girl's great, she's on to something, you know, but, and if you don't respect me, and you don't like me after that, I'm okay with that too, I just give me a fair chance.
I think that's why we get along, because I really don't care who likes me and doesn't like me, it took a long time for me to get there. Listen, it took me a long time to get here, like, I was, I got elected when I was 26. And as a young guy in my twenties, life is about people liking you, life is about peer pressure, life is about fitting in. And I got on the school committee in Lawrence, and my first meeting, I was the first elected member, I was the first new elected member in 15 years. So everyone else had been there 15 years. So I was asking questions that nobody was ever asking before, because they were all part of the same team, and all of a sudden, I was getting, I was getting bullied like you're getting bullied. It's one of the reasons why, when I saw Jana being bullied, and you being bullied, I stepped in to try to help, because nobody helped me back then. Like, nobody stepped in and said, hey, kid, I used to be on a school committee or a city council, let me guide you through this, let me help you. I floundered on my own, and I made every mistake in the world, I made everything, I did everything 100% wrong. Like, if I wrote a book about what I did when I was an elected official, it would be a manual on what not to do. And so I see people like you, and people like Jana, Dean Italian, even guys like Ken when he first got on, and I was like, you know what, maybe these guys can, can learn something from my experiences, and at least, so I can guide them, like, I don't care how you vote, but when you get attacked, there's ways to deal with it that are harmful, there are ways to deal with it that can mitigate what's going on.
So I took it, and I kind of ran with it, you know, you called me uneducated, you told me I was dumb, you told me I didn't know what I was doing, you told me that I put my kids first.
You mean them, not me?
Right, 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 but I'm just saying, as a general statement.
I don't want Dan taking this clip and going, see, see, he did insult her, because he's been lying about you since day one.
No, I mean, well, I know what the comment was about the other day, when you insulted my intelligence, and I don't feel you insulted my intelligence at all, you said exactly what I did. You questioned me, you told me I couldn't, so I did, I started reading Massachusetts General Law, I started reading school committee policies, and school committee rules and regulations through the state, I started doing that to prove to you that I'm not here for, I don't wanna title-
You mean him, not me?
Yes, I don't wanna title, I don't wanna climb the ladder, I don't wanna go to city council, I don't wanna be mayor, I don't wanna be, I wanna go back to being a parent.
Right.
But I wanna do it when everything's okay for the kids.
Right.
You know, when your, when your neighbors' kids are coming to you, and, or your niece is coming to you and saying, oh, Ms. Kristen, I saw you in the newspaper at school today, that, that's a tough pill to swallow, because they have to deal with that.
And didn't they target your kid, like, didn't they, didn't teachers say things like to the kids about your, about your kid, hey, his mom, her mom, is doing things that they shouldn't be doing, and?
Why doesn't your mom like the school?
Right. Why does your mom hate teachers?
Why does your mom hate the teachers? And my daughter's response, and I was very shocked by my daughter's response, because she is the purest heart, but she said, do you like the schools? And they said, no, and she said, then why are we having this conversation?
Good for her, good for young Kristen in training.
And she's not, she's like so pure, and so innocent, and she just meant that, like-
But didn't the school, didn't the administration also target your kid, that your kid needs additional help, and your kid, they're saying is not qualified, and won't let your kid qualify for the additional help, because of the way you vote on the, on the school committee? I mean, we know Dan's getting help, Dan's kids are getting help, but your kids aren't.
I don't know if, I don't know if that's the case, but I will say, just because I know there are so many parents that struggle with this, both of my kids struggle with dyslexia. My oldest, my older, I shouldn't say my oldest, my oldest is 21, my older daughter, 14 at the Timmy, she, she was a few grade levels behind, and she never got any services, no help, no service, and they just didn't wanna acknowledge her dyslexia, so that's a tough pill for-
Is she on a path now, where she's getting the extra help, or is it still not being addressed?
I mean, now she's at the GLTS, and they're wonderful, but she went into the GLTS at a third-grade reading level.
It's outrageous.
You know.
No kid should be passed along from any grade to another grade.
Well, when you're going into high school, at a third-grade and reading level, it doesn't just affect your reading.
Of course.
It affects your relationship, because you don't have the same vocabulary everybody else has. It affects your conversations, because you think someone's saying something funny, so you laugh, and they were being serious, and you're like, oh, I didn't know that. It affects you socially.
How about learning science? Like, how are you supposed to learn science if you can't understand the terms, right?
Right.
How do you understand history if you don't know the terms, right, if you don't understand what it is that you're reading, and, you know, it's always, two things have always been a pet peeve of mine about education, one is that, the other is, when I say that, I mean, passing kids along that are not prepared for the next grade, right, because that holds them back, and it makes them suffer in a lot of ways. The other is the way they grade kids, they don't grade kids, they don't grade kids anymore. Now, it's like, he feels good in class.
Competent one, competent two, yeah.
Right, it's bullcrap. Now, if you have five tests, and you get 100 on all five tests, let's say you get 80 on all five tests, your score is 80, and 80 is a B, that's what you should have on your report card, right? If you have 10 tests, and you got, you take the, you add up all the test scores, you divide by 10, and that's your, that's your, that should be your-
Average.
Your grade on your report card.
Right.
And today, it's, well, he felt good, he tries hard, and so what they're doing is they're dumbing-
I hate the grading, the rating system.
Yes, so what it is, it doesn't give a parent any understanding on how well the kid is reading, how well he understands science, how well he understands history. And, and they do that, because, like, with MCAS, you can't grade how well the teacher's doing if you don't know whether or not the kid understands the material. And then someone like you comes on and goes, hey, wait a minute, and then they beat up on you.
Yeah, it's tough, it's tough, because I want, and like I said, I'm not gonna change it for my kids, my kids, I've already, I've already filled that, you know, I can't, I can't go back, I can't fix that for my daughter.
Tell us some of the things, we have, we're short on time, but, tell us some of the things that are in the audit report, that the public needs to know, that Dan Chabilla purposely tried to stop the auditors from, you have something?
Yeah, I just wanna, like, well, she's looking for it, we have Luis Robles, he's saying, research shows that the brain doesn't learn as effectively with computers versus writing.
Writing, reading, yeah.
Yep.
All right, go ahead. So, I mean, I've questioned the literacy rates since I started on the school committee, that's always been a problem, I'm always wrong. Every member on the committee will tell me I'm wrong, and that's kind of where that all stemmed from. I liked Dan, I respected Dan, I went into the school committee kinda as a partner with Dan, like, we're gonna fix everything, you know, and-
But he sold out. You don't have to say it, I mean, you're a politician, so I can say it, he sold out, listen, when the guy ran for mayor, way back when,
He ran for mayor?
He ran for mayor, and I had him on my, on my program, I almost endorsed him for mayor, I was really impressed when I first met Dan. But it's like a lot of other people, you're impressed when you first meet them, and then you get to know them a little bit, and you realize what frauds they have, and you go, oh, I almost fell for that, like, really? And so I, I've always given, and the last four years, I have not really dumped on Dan a lot at all. I've kinda watched him, and I've hoped that he'd get better, and he did in a lot of ways, he got better in a lot of ways, but he also got much worse in a lot of ways, he became much more arrogant, and he became much more pushy, and he became a bully. And anybody that said anything that didn't comport with his liberal, left-wing, let the boys go in the girls' bathrooms bullshit ideology, all of a sudden, he would personally attack them, and then, on top of that, he's a coward, he would have his wife get up at public participation, and push the issues, because he knew if he did it, he would publicly, he would politically suffer for some of the things that the wife says, but she can say it, so he hides behind her. And I just have no respect for any of that, like, you know, he, I, and I'm gonna address this, I wasn't gonna today, but since we're talking about this. I went on Facebook last week, and I talked about his, him getting his kid into the Marsh School, and he went on his page, he didn't screen capture what I said and post it, he went on his page and said, I attacked his children. I absolutely did not attack his children, that's the tactic of a bully, that's the tactic of someone who's dishonest. When they, when you say something about, he could have come on my page and said, Tom, that's not true, and here's why. I would have respected that and had that conversation with him, but he didn't do that. He hid behind his wife, and had his wife come on my page and say things, and I kept saying to her, well, why isn't Dan saying this? Why are you saying this and not Dan? And then I went to his page, and I found out why, because he didn't want people to see me and him having the back and forth, because he lied about what I said, when on his page it said, he's, I'm a victim, he's picking on my children, it's just over the line, we just can't have that. Well, you know, I talked about your kids, we talked about your kid having dyslexic hair, was I picking?
My kids were affected when I was in the newspaper.
Right, your kids had to deal with it, when teachers said, oh, well, she doesn't like teachers, why does she like the school? I didn't see Dan defending you then, I didn't see Dan on Facebook at a meeting say, hey, leave her kids out of it, leave them alone.
So I didn't take you offending Dan's kids in your comment, I will say that, I did have a conversation with Dan about it, and, you know, people always come to me, and they're like, will you tell Tom to not, and I, like, I have no control of you, you're a grown man, you can say and do whatever you want.
Anybody who's met me knows nobody can control Tom, except Dan can do it, once in a while, Intern Girl can do it.
That I, you know, that people think that, but I will, I will stand up for- But I'm, I'm flattered that I, you know, that people think that, but I will, I will stand up for the fact that, like. When, when you had brought up Dan and going to the Marsh, Dan was at the Tenny and Dan was on the PTO at the Tenny and that's how I met Dan. Um, and that's, that was my impression of him going into the school committee. He didn't, he, he did move to a different part of town. His kid was only placed in the Tenny because when you go to preschool, you don't go to the Marsh unless you have a, like, an autism diagnosis or something. So, um, I mean, that was back then, not now. So I, I think he went to the Tenny because his kids were placed there. And then, you know, when his kids were in kindergarten, they did go to the Marsh. Um, so I did see a change when he switched to the Marsh.
Of course. He went from being Brandy's biggest critic to being her biggest kiss ass.
Well, the Timony and the Tenny are, are the.
Two different.
Two schools in the district that are the hardest. They're the lowest rating and, and the Marsh and the CGS, I, I never hear anything bad about the CGS.
Can I tell you something? Working, um, in admissions, the ratings in Methuen Schools, the number one school is the CGS, followed by the Marsh. The Timony is the last place, unfortunately.
Yeah, and, and, and so when you, when you go over there, and I understand, I understand where he's coming from because he doesn't see it anymore. He doesn't see the bad, maybe. He, you know. But you hear it. You're.
But my problem is the dishonesty. He could have had the conversation with me online and said, Tom, here's what really happened. And listen, I had that conversation with your colleague or your future colleague last night. We had a really nice conversation and we, and we got along quite well. And I'm always willing to do that with anybody. Jim Giugio wanted to sit down with me. I, I may be sitting down with. Baby cakes very shortly and having a conversation. Someone reached out to me. I'm willing to sit down literally with anyone, anyone. Vladimir Putin wants to have lunch with me, I'm going to sit down and hear what they have to say. I've never been the kind of person that says, no. Yes. Yes. It's possible. But the, but the point is that, like, had he come on the page and tried to have a conversation with me and not be confrontational, not be a dick about it. I would have had the conversation and if he, he gave me information that showed that what I posted was wrong, I would have corrected it 100% on the spot. I would have done that. Instead, he had his wife come on, be very confrontational. They always do this, you're supposed to be a journalist. They always throw the journalist thing at you and, um, you know, you're supposed to do your research and yellow journalism and it's always. Like, they all do the same stupid thing that every other corrupt elected official has done for the last 30 years thinking they're so clever. And then I go to his page and it's the dishonesty. It's, he's attacking, like, trying to make himself a victim. Doug is attacking my children. He's attacking my family. That's over the line.
Yeah, they came at me with that.
Policy, they came at you with that?
Well, one of the comments, um, his wife.
Oh, yeah, yeah, she, she did.
She was right. She's like, oh, I want him to say, I don't want.
I, I don't ever want, I don't ever want, ever want anyone to feel like anybody's coming at their kids.
Right.
Ever.
But here's the other thing, and I, I, I think everyone should at least consider this when these things at least are alleged. Almost every politician we know at election time takes pictures of their kids holding their sign and puts them on Facebook and puts them on their campaign literature. But then the minute you say something about the, their kids getting a favor or their family getting a favor, it's, my kids are off limits. This is politics. Well, wait a minute. If you're going to exploit your family and your children to get votes, you can't cry about it when somebody talks about your kids or your family. And I'm not saying people should ever attack someone's family. I have a policy at the Valley Patriot. We don't talk about anybody's sex life. We don't talk about anybody's family unless.
Only behind scenes.
Eh, eh, I mean, publicly. I don't write about them. I don't talk about them on the show. Unless the elected official makes them an issue, right? We had an issue in Lawrence with an elected official whose wife did something horrible. I didn't write about it. Everybody jumped on me. And then it turns out she was a city employee. And then it turned out she was a city employee because he got her a job. Now, all of a sudden, it's an issue, right? Because he got her the job. That's an issue. If you're gonna, if you're gonna make your kids or your family an issue, then I think it's fair game. Otherwise, I'm never gonna, I don't care if, eh, if, if the mayor of Methuen tomorrow, let's find somebody that I don't like, like, let's say Steve Sable, he used to be on the city council. When he was on the city council, if his brother robbed a bank, right, I'm not writing that story. Even if I would normally write it if it was anybody else, I still won't write that story because I don't think it's fair that a politician should have to suffer and that their reputation should have to suffer. For the stupid stuff their family does because we all have family members we don't talk to. We all have family members we don't get along with and it isn't fair. It isn't fair. Hunter Biden, I never talked about Hunter Biden until he got a pardon. Right? Until the, until the father made him the issue.
What about the money he made in Ukraine?
I, I, I don't care. Until the.
I have family who are like attorneys who are like up here, but then I have family in jail. Like, it's, it's, eh, you know, you never know. So. We have Luis Robles. I'm so sorry.
Luis Robles, give him a vote in Lawrence.
I want to make sure that I, I get everyone included that's watching. We really appreciate everyone here. He said, another issue is that those MCAS results come out the next school year. That data might not be as relevant when it comes out so late. And then I have my friend Alice Rodriguez saying CGS clapping hands because we went to the CGS together, so.
So I would say that the MCAS results do, I mean, ha- having them come back in September is kind of sets you up for the, the next year. Now you know where you're lacking. Now you know where you need to make up the difference. So I would say that having them come out in September is, is actually beneficial. Um, we want to, we want to focus on where is the need, right? Like, again, I'll bring it back to, to my daughter who's ninth grade, third grade, really, she was on National Junior Honor Society. She got straight A's.
That's awesome.
So, you know, so it's like, if I had focused on where she wasn't doing well on certain tests, maybe I would have known where to focus some energy and. So to his comment, I, I just think it's great to have them back the following year because then we can start fresh.
Um, we, we really do have to go, but I want you to touch a little bit on, so Brandy's leaving. Shame on the other school board members who supported her contract, who gave her a good evaluation, knowing that all this stuff was going on. They knew it and they poo-pooed you for two years doing it. Right? Listen, by the way, this is nothing personal. I said, I had to say this a month ago last night.
No, she's not. I, Brandy's nice.
It's nothing personal. People, people think that because I say it in a, in a bombastic way that somehow it's personal. I've never even met Brandy. I've never even had a conversation with her. It has nothing to do with personal. Eh, um, my job is to evaluate public officials and the job that they do. And so now you have a, you have to find a new superintendent. My fear is that the current committee, which has obviously shown their own incompetence when it comes to evaluating superintendents, is going to try and appoint somebody on the way out the door. You've got to put a stop to that.
I would hope so. I mean, I would hope we could do that as a committee because I think that we need a, I think we need a nationwide search. I think we need to.
Right.
Kind of hire out of Methuen.
But I want to hear from you what you think, because I've got some very strong ideas. We'll talk about it in another show about what I think Methuen needs for a new super. But what do you think? Eh, eh, if you get reelected, what are you going to be looking for in a new superintendent to replace now not just Brandy Quong, but you're also, you know, going back to Judy Scannell. You've had two superintendents in a row that had very similar styles and, you know, what, what, what are your thoughts on, how do you move that forward? How do you change the culture and the climate in the Methuen Schools?
You dig. You dig deep. You ask the questions nobody else wants to ask. You, you dive into their history. Where have you been? What schools have you been? Go into those schools, see what the problems are in those schools. Join.
Check their immigration status, number one.
You know, so I, I, and I just want, I.
Nice catch.
I, I just want to know what your background is. What are, what are you going to bring to Methuen that Methuen doesn't already have? I don't want to know the fluff. I don't want to know, oh, well, I have this on my record and I want to know the real stuff. I, I make mistakes all the time. Tell me I'm wrong so we can move forward and we can learn from it, right? Are you willing to be that type of superintendent?
Would you be willing to accept an insider? If somebody inside applied, would you be interested? No?
No. But that's my personal, so I want everyone to.
I agree with her 100%. I'm surprised she was willing to say it out loud.
I am willing to say it out loud because I stand by it. So like, I will go with the vote of the committee because I'm on a committee. I think that it's our job to have a difference of opinions. It's how we're going to grow. It's how we're going to make change. It's how we're going to. So when I'm the only one at the table voting no, or me and Ken are the only ones voting no, I'm not going to leave and say, you guys are, you guys are wrong. You guys did wrong. Like, we compiled that as a committee and that's the decision of the committee.
Well, you're a professor. You vote and then however the result is, you move on, right? So you're, you're not looking from within, you're looking from outside. Eh, what, what, what do you think of the two or three qualities that a superintendent coming in, eh, are going to need? What should they be focusing on? What should their number one priorities be?
Uh, patience. Patience because it's going to be a tough, it's going to be tough. It's going to be tough to walk into Methuen, um, because there is, as you, you know, as you saw it on the audit, eh, there is a lot. So I, I guess I would ask them, one, what their stance is on the computers and learning on their computers, right? Because I want kids to read.
Books.
Um, I want to know, eh, like, don't remove books. You, don't, don't pull books.
No, I'm saying, you said you want them to read. I want them to read books.
Oh, right, right. Um, and.
Academics, I would hope. I was hoping, and I hate to feed her an answer, but eh, eh, if academics aren't in the top three, I'm in trouble.
So, I mean, reading was, I mean, I, so reading is academics to me, right? Like, it's reading, writing, literacy. That's it.
They also need to have, like, the license for that, right, to be a superintendent.
I mean, that's step one. That's step one.
It's sad that you have to say that, but this is Methuen after all.
Right? And like, where do you stand on certain things? Like, what do you think belongs in a school? Like, so, some things don't belong in schools, you know, where.
There's a lot of things at schools that don't belong in schools.
Politics, for one, don't belong in schools.
Especially when they don't teach social studies full time.
Yeah, I, I just don't want anyone that owes anybody any favors. I don't want someone that's going to put themselves first before they put the kids. I want someone that's truly dedicated to raising the next generation. This isn't about a paycheck. This is about you're raising the next adult.
And it's also not about training the next generation of community activists. It's about teaching kids how to read, teaching them their academic subjects. And letting them decide for themselves what their politics are going to be when they grow up. Letting them, letting them decide themselves if they want to support, you know, if they believe in global warming. If they want to believe in abortion on demand. If they want to believe in whatever they want to believe. It should be up to them. You shouldn't be indoctrinating them with political ideas in the classroom. And in the, and here's the thing, we say with curriculum, like, one of the things, one of the dishonest things Dan duds, eh, and people like Dan. They say things like, well, you know, you talked about sex in the classroom and it's, it's just a lie because it's not part of the curriculum. We don't have a policy to talk about these things. So wh- are you trying to give us the impression that it doesn't happen? Because we know that it does. So when they say things like, it's not part of the curriculum, it's to give people the impression that you're lying when you bring it up and it doesn't happen. Right? They're lying by omission. They're not saying it doesn't happen. They're saying, oh, well, just like when they say, um, illegal aliens, it's a lie. The Democrats are trying to fight for illegal aliens to get healthcare. Because they, by federal law, they can't get it. And what they're not telling you is, but then they reimburse the states who do give it to them. So California does give healthcare to the illegal aliens and the feds are reimbursing California. So they can have a federal, so this is the lie by omission that all politicians on both sides do. And then we see what's going on with talking about people's preferred pronouns in the classroom. It just doesn't belong there. It just doesn't.
Well, I mean, it doesn't.
If you want to think you're a girl at home, fine, be a girl at home, but that, that doesn't belong in school.
I, I mean, yeah. My personal feelings have nothing to do with my school committee role, right? My personal feelings are my own and I take.
What are those personal feelings?
I take, so I don't think that belongs in school. I don't think that me being straight and having a husband has any reason to be a discussion in school. You know, sex ed is sex ed, right? You, if, if you're gay, if you're straight, if you're this or you're that.
But do you believe in sex ed in general, that we should be teaching about sex in the classrooms?
Um, I think that we should be teaching sex ed in a, in a, in a, in a way of. This is your, this is your body. This is health, health education, right? You, you're, you're having sex? Okay, wear a condom. Not with who, not where do you stand.
At what, at what grades? I, I'm almost with you, but.
Six through eight, maybe? Maybe five even? Because that's when, you know, you're getting your period.
I would have said senior in high school, but.
Well, some of these kids don't have parents to talk to them about their periods or their, or sex or something like that. But, I mean, I remember when I was in middle school, we had sex ed and it, it wasn't anything like it is today, you know? But I do, I do want to say about my, my fellow school committee members, we're all there because we want to be, right? I mean, they're, it's, it's volunteer. I mean, it's, no one else is stepping up. No one else is coming and saying.
All of them deserve credit. Even Dan, even Laurie, they all deserve credit for stepping forward, for running, for putting their name out there.
Right.
You know, eh, eh, you could have the worst or the best motives at all, but by, by virtue of putting your name on the ballot, you open yourself up to a lot of scrutiny that most people in the private world cannot handle.
Right.
And so even to, even Dan, even Laurie, people I don't like, people on the city council I don't like, they, if you step forward and you put your name out, you should be, at least be respected for that.
100%. Eh, eh, and, and never, I mean, and it shouldn't affect your kids ever. It should never affect your kids.
All right, we definitely have to go. We're over time. Um, if you get reelected.
Yes.
Eh, first of all, make a pitch. People who want, eh, you, eh, obviously you want people to vote for you. The election's November 4th. You're running for school, school committee. Eh, if you get elected, what are your top three priorities real quick and then we're going to bounce out. And how can people get in touch if you could help your campaign?
Um, so my, I have, my phone number is 978-259-9499. I am happy to talk to anyone. I don't, I don't, eh, I'm happy to talk to you. Give me a chance. Let me.
You'll take everybody's call.
Yes. Yeah, and, and I'd love to hear from you. Even if, if you think I'm wrong, tell me I'm wrong. Let's work together. Let's figure it out.
How easy is DJ to work with?
DJ's, okay. I mean, yeah, eh, he, he's receptive. He will, he will hear you out. Um, I actually had a conversation with him last night because, you know, I, I. I didn't give him enough credit and I thought he was just kind of letting things slide and letting things go, um, because we've had a few conversations, but eh, he's pulled through. So I.
I'm glad to hear that.
Yeah. Um, but call, call me. Reach out. Talk to me. Give, you know, tell me your concerns. Tell me where you think we need to go. Because my focuses are going to be on special ed, um, bullying and bringing fun back to the classroom. I want to see kids skipping down the hallway, high fiving each other. I want to see.
Yeah, and I want to see kids celebrating Halloween and coming in in costumes and Valentine's Day, right?
Parental involvement, right? Parents belong in schools.
When is our voting day?
Voting day is November 4th.
Tuesday, November 4th. There's no school that day, correct?
There is no school. Nope.
Why is there no school that day?
Because of the elections are in the schools.
You don't want kids in there.
So you guys cancel school? Oh, I guess that makes sense. So, so sex offenders can go vote. You don't have to worry about them walking into a school, I guess, right?
Can sex offenders vote?
Yeah, they can vote. Unfortunately, but they can. Right?
So my, my biggest.
I didn't realize that.
Especially for school committee. Why is sex offenders?
In North Andover, they don't, they don't cancel school. We voted at the high school.
They may not have in their schools.
They have it at the town hall.
I, no, I voted, I voted at the high school.
Well, the field house at the high school is big enough for all the, for all Methuen, but you don't do it there.
Fair enough.
I don't know.
Shut up, eh, oh, I'm sorry to interrupt you. I want you to get the last word if you can as far as.
No, I mean, my only, my only last word is vote for me, number three.
Okay, number three. Um, and you should also consider Ken Roulette. He does a great job.
Yes.
Um, and he takes a lot of crap for it. Um, also did not get endorsed by the teachers, you know, even though he went to bat for them as well. Which is also interesting. The teachers came onto my page and were like, you're from North Andover. Why should you have any say? Why are you endorsing candidates in Methuen? I'm like, huh, how many teachers in Methuen live in Methuen? 7%? 9%? And you guys are endorsing candidates? And then, by the way, they always tell you, we have nothing to do with curriculum. Like, you blame the teachers for curriculum, Tom. Why are you blaming the teachers? We have no say over curriculum. I'm sorry, are you endorsing school committee candidates? Aren't school committee candidates in charge of curriculum? Aren't you the ones interviewing them and vetting them? So actually, you do have something to do with curriculum. Uh, Ken Roulette deserves your vote. Uh, Maria Figueroa, you have to vote for Maria and you have to vote for Alejandro Baez. Did I leave anybody out? Who are my people, right? Uh, Alejandro, you, Ken and, and Maria Figueroa, she has, she has to get in. The, I, I keep pushing Maria because the insiders are targeting her, but they're cowards about it. They're not doing it publicly. So there's this smear campaign going on behind the scenes that most people don't know is going on because they're doing it behind the scenes.
But that's sad. That's why I keep saying, talk to me, talk to her, talk, form your own opinion. Don't go off of what everybody else is saying because they may have an agenda. I don't have an agenda.
Right.
You know, out of all the years that I've been in Methuen.
My agenda's the kids.
Kristen has been the only politician who's come to my door and talked to me.
Really? Really?
Yes, all my years. The only one. So I appreciate that. I appreciate you being accessible always. Some people tend to forget that once they get in, they get a chair, so.
All right, let's take our sponsors, let's bounce out of here. We're going to, are we going to, we're all going to, um, to Jocelyn's, right? We're going to Jocelyn's. We're going to meet Alejandro over there at some point, today.
Today? What time?
Right now.
Oh, let's go.
Going to go to Jocelyn's.
How come I can't hear this?
You like, you like, uh, Lebanese food, right?
I've never had them.
Jocelyn's by Sevmar. You've never had Lebanese food? Oh, boy. We're going to change your life today. This is, this is going to be the day that Kristen Maxwell wakes up to the amazing Lebanese food at Jocelyn's at Sevmar over on Merrimack Street. Grape leaves, kibbie, oh my God, she's going to love it. The hummus, eh, the, the.
The shama, the shama.
This chowama's amazing. I love the grape leaves. And you know what's really great over there is.
The martinis are good.
Well, Sancho girl likes the martinis. I, eh, and I love the, the lamb chops are really good. Um, and in fact, it's so good that we usually go there at lunchtime, but I order from the dinner menu because I don't want small portions. I'm fat now. I like to eat a lot. So. Uh, so we're, we're going to head over and we'll say hi to Jocelyn and Jolie over at, um, Sevmar, Jocelyn's by Sevmar in Methuen. You guys should be going there. I'm surprised they're not as busy as I thought that they would be, um, when they first opened, but, um, hopefully we're going to be able to help them get some business. They deserve it. Thank you to Wanda Santos, city council candidate in Methuen at large. And if any other candidate wants to sponsor the show, it's going to help me buy more time to get more candidates in here before election time. So please do that. Century 21 Mc.
I can't hear it. I just, I put it down here.
I couldn't hear it. Century 21 McClan and Real Estate, the Zanny Pesci Law Office, she's also on the ballot. Uh, Marston in Sun Construction, Ronnie Marston's also on the ballot. EIS Investigation and Gun Training, Tomo in Shake and Seafood. Free shout out to JT's Ice Cream. Every time I look up and I see the ice cream on the screen, it makes me, there it is, right there.
So good.
I'm going to stop against some of that after Sevmar. Uh, Clear Path for Veterans New England, AFC Urgent Care, Pleasant Valley Landscaping. Contractors, Doug Materios, Prime Insurance in North Andover and North Reading, W3ON Web Design. We have to talk about them more. And, uh, Four Star Lighting and a free shout out to my buddy Paul Lambert at Lambert and Randon.